Good evening, everyone. I'd like to invite you to the Selectman's meeting this day, Tuesday, July 9th. And must inform you that we're being filmed by Area 58, and you can find it also on YouTube. First thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first appointment's not until 7:45, so if you want to go forward with your report.
Okay, so do I have to move the agenda?
Yeah, you should probably move the agenda.
Well, is there any additions to the agenda? I should have done that.
No.
One thing, South Street between River Street and South, there's, I'd like Charlie to get in touch with the Highway Surveyor and ask him if he can take a look at it because we have a complaint from one of our residents that it's growing out over the road and they can't walk.
So this is on South Street?
South Street between River Street, just off of River Street.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so I move the approval of the agenda for July 9th, 2019?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitment. FY19 withholding warrant number 117 for $90,789.54. I move FY19 vendor warrant 118 for $535,613.36. FY20 vendor warrant number 1 for $1,380,718.27. Ambulance commitment from 6/17/19 to 6/23/19 for $14,660.54.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the following warrants and commitment. FY19 payroll warrant 119 for $125,421.20. FY19 school warrant number 120 for $378,023.75. FY19 vendor warrant 121 for $67,906.90. FY20 payroll warrant number 2 for $119,302.48. FY20 vendor warrant number 3 for $182,035.14. FY20 withholding warrant number 4, $83,185.98. The mobile home park fee number 7 for $5,160.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, so I move to approve payment of the Selectman's bills dated July 9th, 2019. $50 from the Selectman's expense account. Insurance for $204,323.
Right, that's for our property liability.
Should I be reading that section?
Oh, no, that's fine. I just explained why it's such a large amount. That's our annual insurance premium.
Okay.
We have a couple of insurance policies still left to pay for, but that's the big one.
Okay. Insurance line for $600 for CNA, Surety Direct, it's a bond. Recruitment and training for $69, it's a classified ad to Express Newspapers. This is an FY19 to Michael Gilman out of the Law Line for $3,192. This one.
I move KP Law for $1,881.05.
Okay.
I'll second him.
Um.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get that one.
Do you want to do that one too?
Yeah. I'll move Brooks and Durences PC for $240.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Okay, and then we have, um, $1,125.36 to Matthew Bender, and it says?
These are the law books.
Law books.
I am just so the board's aware, that number, that's not the only bill we got for the books. I'm going to be checking with LexisNexis to see now whether it makes more sense. I once in a while contemplate switching over to online, because as far as I know, 99% of the time the person is using that, it does mean that if somebody else needs help. I mean, these days, the general laws are all online, the regulations are all online. The thing I check most there is any case law.
Right.
But by having it online, you have that available. I mean, because we're spending several thousand dollars a year now on law books, and I mean, be more prudent to go online. But I'll be taking a look at that.
Do you need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any minutes or anything else?
No minutes.
Okay, so we have a slew of line transfers. I'm going to read them, and then I don't know how the board wants to deal with them in terms of votes, but, and some of these are repeats in the sense of it sounds like I'm taking money from the same place, going to the same place, but they're for different bills. $2,405.41 from Snow and Ice to Stormwater.
Now, this is because of year end?
Yes, these are all year end.
Year end, that will do it 2019.
These are all 2019, yes.
Okay.
$26 from Snow and Ice to Streetlights, $12,900 from Snow and Ice to Town Roads, $357 from Snow and Ice to Trafficlights, $3,192 from Snow and Ice to Law, another $1,125.36 from Snow and Ice to Law, another $2,431.25 from Snow and Ice to Law, $1,881.05 from Town Share Grant Writing to Law, $5,000 from Property Surveying to Law, $3,342.95 from Snow and Ice to Town Share Medicare, $750 from Fire Wages Full Time to Fire Ambulance Supplies, $45,000 from Special Needs Tuition to Special Needs Transportation, $5,000 from Special Needs Tuition to Elementary School, Halifax Elementary School expenses, and then $240 from Snow and Ice to Law, and then $2,000 from Fire Wages to Fire Training. I don't know if, Gordon wants to abstain from all the ones doing the law count, and ask somebody else to make the motion on everything else, or?
I'll move it. I'll move the line item transfers.
Is there a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye. You're saying for the ones from the law?
So, I vote aye, except for abstaining from law. Okay.
And then people, there are whole bundles here for people to sign.
By people, you mean us?
Your people.
It's 1:20, we had a continuation hearing for the revocation of Halifax Country Club flame of the fuel storage man?
Just we don't have anything. I talked to Pam Adutia, the town treasurer, collector, and she had said that there has been no action by Country Club. What I'm recommending is we continue the hearing for another two weeks to 7:50 on July 23rd. I'm going to send a note to the Country Club saying that there's a fair chance that the board will make a decision about the revocation hearing at that time. Either they'll have to have made some progress or the board would seriously consider revoking the license.
Any objections? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Septic system for the public hearing, just to put the board on notice. Board House is having a septic system hearing on July 17th. They have to hold the hearing because the proposed septic system is within five feet of the property lines for Holly Street and Wham Sutta, which means they're within five feet of the right-of-way for those two roads. Normally, it's simply notifying the butters, in this case, worthy of butter. So the notice came to the board. I did send a copy of this to the Highway Surveyor and the Water Superintendent, just in case, I mean, DixSafe should recognize anything that's going on there. As part of the project, they should call DixSafe, but nevertheless, I wanted to put them on notice so they're at least in the loop that eventually a septic system might go in that close to the road. Just for the board to know, two weeks from now, we'll have a hearing on a dog named Jada who allegedly on the 30th of June was loose and jumped on an individual, may have been another dog. The owner of the dog's been notified, the owner of the other dog's been notified, along with the ACO and police chief and such. So that hearing is scheduled for two weeks from today at 9:00 PM. Walnut Street Speed Limit, Hell's Brag had written, he's written about a number of traffic issues, but he wrote again about the truck traffic and speed limits on Walnut Street, asking about better or larger signage. We have one of those hybrid signs on Walnut Street that says Thickly Cell but also has a speed limit, that he'd like to have the speed limit section enlarged, but I think that's going to need the entire sign enlarged. But Traffic Safety Committee, I know I talked to the police chief, and he's going to be trying to schedule a meeting for the Traffic Safety Committee later this summer to take that up along with some other issues that have evolved. So I don't have any news other than Mrs. Sprague's interest in the matter, and we'll see what we can do later this summer. In connection with that, I was at OCPC, Old Collie Plan Commission today. They have a pedestrian and bicycle study committee. I've been trying, we've been trying to work out ways of trying to extend the sidewalk network, and it did generate a few ideas. Again, I'll probably talk to the Traffic Safety Committee about that. Appointments, Stacy Veraro, she'd like to be reappointed to the Holidays in Halifax for a term that expired June 3rd of 2020.
Need a motion?
Yes, please.
I would be happy to move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council on Aging Facility, I know we're going to, we're having the meeting tonight about the parking lot, which is really not, it's going to take up some time, and we're having another meeting two weeks from now on recycling fee and also just recycling solid waste in general for the long term. We had talked about, you know, within the last year about having, having had the debate and the vote, failed on working on Pope's Tavern, to have another discussion at some point about basically starting from scratch, looking at the options for the Council on Aging. I know that there's been some outreach from Carver and Plimpton about the possibility of doing some sort of regional facility, so we'd like permission to talk to my colleagues there. Obviously, we're not signing any agreements or anything, but looking at some possibilities, but also the asking if the board, I guess, probably sometime in August, would want to set aside a time, one of the August meetings, to invite everybody in to talk about what the options are.
I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I've been approached by one of the Selectmen in Plimpton as well, to see if we had any interest, and I said, of course, I can't speak for the entire board, but we would be remiss to not at least, you know, check and see if we could do something.
Is there any preference between the 13th and the 27th?
I would prefer the 27th.
Okay, let's do it then.
Anybody else?
I'm fine with that.
7:45, we are appointing Ms. Gainer, motion to accept approval of use of new voting machines?
Aye, yes.
Aye.
You didn't even move up.
Well, you hide behind the pole bar.
Oh, yeah. This is the process that the state requires, that once a town votes for the new voting machines, a motion has been made by the board of Selectmen to decommission technically the old machines and accept the use of the new machines. And once you make a motion for that and accept it, I then stop the process of ordering them through the company that had the best price, the one we wanted to go with.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
So, could you read the motion? I believe there's a.
As required by the general laws, 54, Section 34, I move that the town of Halifax is to start using the ImageCast precinct optional scan tabulators from the cow, discontinue the use of the ACCU vote tabulator. That's a mouthful.
I know.
The ImageCast tabulator is to be utilized for the first time on the president's primary schedule for March 3rd, 2020.
So are you moving that?
I'm moving it.
Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you. No, David.
Easy's good.
Sitting in front of the pole's not bad.
Yeah, well, we're going to have to move those chairs back. Tree cutting, National Grid, we've set up the public hearing for this on, two weeks from now, from 7, at 7:10. I've publicized the hearing and the list of trees to be cut. National Grid has sent out notices to the butters, in essence, all these trees are within the right-of-way of the various roads. The people who, as it says, live in front or back, or you want to put it, of the trees have been notified by National Grid. So we've done as much publicity as I can about that. I don't know how many people are going to show up or not, we haven't received any comments yet, but at least the hearing is set up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On Elm Street, they did go back out and they put actual pieces of paper on every tree that they were going to take down to with a written notice.
Ribbons or paper?
They did the ribbons before, and now there's an actual piece of paper that has a statement on it.
Okay, so are we getting inquiries? We'll see who comes to the meeting.
Yeah, right. Let's see, we did have an unregistered vehicle complaint for 15 Ocean Avenue. I didn't make it out there during intermission, but we've had problems before with this property. Basically, it goes in and out tax titled, and the owner's disappeared, and the family tends to fail to respond to any notifications. So someone on Ocean Avenue taken advantage of the situation and parked an unregistered vehicle on the property without permission. We had somebody else complain about it. I know the police department's been notified and contacting the owner of the vehicle. I had planned on checking tonight before the meeting. I didn't have an opportunity to do that, but.
Chief.
I haven't gone by to check, but I just speak with the owners of Pratt, and he assured me that he would have the vehicle moved.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
A couple days ago.
Thanks, Chief. Speaking of vehicles, have we heard anything?
From the truck?
Yeah.
No?
Then we need to do something with them.
Yeah, okay, I'll get a note to hand to them. 407 South Street, which is the property we did take through for foreclosure, we had a complaint from a neighbor about the grass getting too high. I have notified both Scott and Steve, you know, saying, you know, if they can get to it, but it's not the highest priority. I'd rather, for instance, have the town shoulders, if they have time, then that's great. But I know, for instance, Steve had, just lost somebody for two or three weeks because of an on-the-job injury.
Because of my job issue, hand?
Yeah, well, we won't need to get into specifics about it, but yeah, he's down one person again, and obviously, he's had people on summer vacation, so, and if they have time available, we'll try and get to it, but.
Is this reasonable?
Wage and Personnel, at some point, we've got to reconstitute the Wage and Personnel Board. I know several weeks ago, the board had talked about a representative from this board to, taking a seat on the board. I'm going to have to talk to the Finance Committee again on Monday. Right now, there's no emergency. People are being paid. Sandy and I are processing step increases, as if the Wage and Personnel Board has signed off on them, simply because I think in terms of a legal situation, we'd be in a poor place.
If we've obligated, I thought the diligence got to be done.
Right, so, but nevertheless, it would be helpful, with nothing else, we need to hire a Wage and Personnel Board Secretary at some point, and they need a Wage and Personnel Board to do that. So I didn't know if the board wanted to continue that discussion about choosing someone.
No, actually, no. So, Mr. Chairman?
Gordon?
I would volunteer to go on that board as long as it's not for classification purposes. If it's going to be classification, I just don't have the time.
Well, that's going to be part of it.
That's a big part of it.
And that's why we were hoping to get people interested, committee.
Well, the board is, the committee as a whole right now, they're supposed to do the reclassification every three years. We did, in essence, one this cast year. But, you know, the hope was that we would then start getting into a cycle, so a number of the positions would be reexamined every three years, instead of having to do the whole barrel fall every, once every three years. But there's nothing preventing us from skipping a year if necessary. We're hoping that we get civilians.
Yeah, and of course, if we were to get civilians, by the time they get up to speed, it would take them some, we may have to really look at Wage and Personnel again. I know I've had some thoughts in the past about it, but we may have to look at it again. But we can't do anything until we have an annual, so.
Is there a way to open up so more people would be available for the board? Because right now?
You can't have, be a town employee.
Can you be another elected official?
No, no.
So it's only Selectman Finance Committee?
Right.
And citizens at large. To do it differently, we would have to change the bylaw.
Which can only unfortunately be done at.
In any town.
Only at an annual change wage?
Yeah, the text, the text sections of the bylaw can only be changed.
Right.
So, in the bylaw, I can't change that piece until.
And the discussion needs to come up with that. We need a Personnel Manager, a Human Resource Manager, someone, if we can't get a committee, if we can't get a committee together, we need to do something.
We could change the complexion of the Wage and Personnel Board, but that would require some discussion too, so.
So, two weeks from now?
Well, I mean, the board could have Gordon.
What direction would you like to?
If Gordon at least is willing to take the seat, so we at least get the administrative, ministerial work done, that would be helpful. Yeah, I'm not, I don't think, no one's coming in next week to ask for.
Are you volunteering for that?
Classification change.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I can resign real quick.
We need it.
I'll second that motion.
It'd be a long list of resignations, not yours.
All in favor?
Aye.
You will be part of a long line.
Of disenchanted Wage and Personnel Board.
Okay, I will talk.
Who motioned, who seconded? I know you jumped on really quick. You didn't want to go out here and weigh us?
Excuse me. I did motion.
Well, um, okay, so what else?
I've called them there.
So Gordon, just what I'll do, I'll see the Finance Committee on Monday, and we'll go see what we can do with them.
I did, when I was on the Finance Committee, make sure the Finance Committee could help the Selectmen, the seat could be appointed.
So, let's see, Aldana, we're talking about later. Chief, is Richard Eldridge going to be coming in, or we're just having the discussion with you and the board about having him?
I don't believe he was invited.
I will know.
Right, okay, so what this is about is, as we were talking about, we have the problem of truck traffic on Walnut Street, because it's an easy way between the bridge waters and going south towards Middleborough. One of the concerns for the residents is that along with the number of trucks and the speed of the trucks is the weight of the trucks. And I believe the idea is if he's appointed as an assistant, Sealer of Weights and Measures, he could then legally measure the truck weights and such with devices.
All right, he's got his, he has scales from DOT. In order to utilize the scales in Halifax, he'd have to be appointed as the assistant weight measures. So we're thinking about doing an event, probably early August, with his assistance, to basically do some safety enforcement on the trucks. Again, we might only get a couple, because as soon as they see us there, which is the problem we have with traffic enforcement, that we've been conducting there for the last month and a half, is as soon as they see us, they get on their walkie-talkies, and everybody's going by there, 25, 20, 30 miles an hour.
But the board could appoint him, who, would we be paying for his time and if?
No, no, he would be, he's Bridgewater, he works days, he'd be at the event, I would speak with the chief there, and he would just be, you know, just coming over to help with the assistance.
Just so, I'm sorry if I'm coming in the middle of, this is just to monitor the trucks on the road?
To weigh him, yeah, do a DOT inspection on him and weigh him if he has to.
That would be with one of our offices actually making the stock?
Yeah, who would quite have, like, two or three guys to help out the market? It's going to be a process, you know, because who will conduct traffic enforcement at the same time? Because obviously, he wouldn't actually need a violation, he could just do it because he's certified by DOT, without safety inspections. We would need a traffic violation per se to pull the truck over.
Right.
And then we'd have to, we'd have to find a place that literally pulled it.
Say that's going to be your biggest problem, is finding a spot.
Yeah, because it's tough there.
Now, is that, is that a town road or a state road?
Not a town.
That's a town road.
All the roads in Halifax are town roads. None of them are all by the state.
We have state-numbered roads, but not state-numbered roads. I'm good with that. Do we need to move?
Yes. Motion. So, I move the appointment of Richard Eldridge of East Bridgewater Police Department to allow him to.
As assistant?
As assistant Sealer of Weights and Measures.
Second.
Any further discussion, Chief? All in favor?
I can actually attest that I saw the chief actually involved in pulling somebody over on Walnut Street a couple days ago.
Just a few.
Just letting people know, our chief actually goes out and works.
I think he'd prefer, we prefer to be out there.
Yeah.
Pull more straightforward.
Isn't that the truth?
Well, I tell you what, I'll trade that with the dog here.
And no, yeah, and he wasn't pulling me over, just to make.
So you say.
Few other items, just, I'm working on getting a special ZEO, if you need one, for the issues regarding 395 Plymouth Street. I had reached out to Chris Carmichael, who's a building inspector in Norton, who was recommended by Andy Questle from KP Law. I'm waiting to hear back from him as whether he would be willing to serve as a special ZEO on this matter. But I haven't, you know, there's nothing to do right now, just so I wanted to update the board. On the trash bag prices, with the new contract with Waste Management, their prices were significantly higher than the Holland prices for fiscal 19, so Susan's having to raise the trash bag fees from $2 to $2.25 for the small bags, and from $3 to $3.25 for the large bags. The actual percentage increase for those is less than the cost for Waste Management, because there are other costs also, the tipping fees and such, because Waste Management went up about 25%, and the percentages here are a lot less than that. The last time the fees were raised for the bag suits, and told me, was 2009.
Is that going to cover?
Yeah, she thinks it will.
Okay.
I'm asking the board to set a time for meeting on July 15th, next Monday. It's the last day. If we can do any line item transfers, the reason for this is, sitting with Sandy Lake today, we realized that we're probably going to get one or more new requests for line transfers between now and then, and legally, we need the Finance Committee to vote. They're scheduled to meet on the 15th. They've told us they'll have a quorum, so I know I can get their approvals, but I didn't, the board could come to some sort of agreement, I don't care what time it is, but at some point during the day or whenever.
So it can be done during the day at our hours?
Absolutely, as long as we got a quorum.
And we post it?
Yeah.
9 o'clock? Is that too early for it?
Are you going to have enough, is it going to be, everything going to be done by 9 a.m.?
Is this because there are outstanding bills that need to come in, or just in the house?
I think it's more clean house in the sense of, Sandy's working to make sure that we have sufficient money in the various accounts to cover everything if necessary, than to still at the last minute move money in between those accounts.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move that.
9 o'clock?
9 o'clock, on the 15th.
Thanks.
Second.
All in favor?
Try and keep it short and sweet. Just a reminder, we had that site plan review. I think the copy is still sitting on the buffet by Pam's desk for Clegg Treat Service over on 450 Industrial Drive. Plane board had requested comments by July 18th, so I didn't bring it back here, just a little reason. Revocation hearing for the Country Club, we've already talked about that. One item I forgot to put on here, that I did mention to the board previously, was Fieldstone Farms and the proposed agreement that Larry Mayo had drafted in response to the requests by Scott Clausen to both increase the number of show days and the number of multi-day shows, but also to change the consent agreement that would, so they would allow him to come back to the board directly to, again, increase those numbers without having without having to increase, to go through the whole consent agreement process with the court. Larry had suggested a few changes in terms of the agreement in response to that. I know Mr. Clausen is interested because he gave me a call earlier this week, asking about where things stood. So I wanted to remind the board of that, and if the board wanted to discuss that tonight, they could.
I'm inclined to go along with Attorney Mayo's recommendations.
As am I.
This thing's been going on forever, it just never seems to end, but I think his approach is reasonable.
I mean, it's a give and take situation. I think we're giving up some of our authority on certain things. And I think that he needs to be enough to cover some of the stuff that he's looking at.
We've been nothing but amenable. I mean, it's, we, it's been dragged out to the ends, but at the end of the day, we've pretty much been cooperative.
And plus the fact we haven't had really any major complaints that I'm aware of from the neighbors or anyone surrounding, you know, the horse show, so.
Surely nothing this year so far?
That's an improvement, considering what it was a couple of years ago when we were having the hearings.
So do we want to, oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I read a Charley sent it again to me electronically yesterday. I'm fine with it and leaning on you guys for the history of the.
Do, do we want to send instructions to Attorney Mayo? Do we need to?
Yeah, I could tell Larry that the board's, to have him contact, Attorney Taylor represents Scott and, so this is our proposal. And I'm sure there'll be a meeting at some point later this summer again, or back and forth between Attorney Taylor and Attorney Mayo, and we'll see how that comes out.
You have horses of a different color, right?
I don't, I don't, those green horses, I'm not quite sure about those.
Yeah, a horse with no name, who isn't busy. He's got more of them, I'm sure of it.
Okay, I will do that. I think you got an eight o'clock, if I remember right. And I'm gonna, as regards that, I know just for some help in terms of pointing at things. I made a large.
So we want to, we want to put a garage, a high-rise garage over there for parking?
There's really only one option, and that's to make more parking spots. And that costs money.
It costs money and takes up some of the lawn, but we do have a flat area.
Yeah.
Just behind, on the right-hand side of the playground, there's grown, there's a lot of parking spots here. Yeah, facing the playground to the right.
This doesn't show the topography here, it does kind of swale down here.
But right in, right from here.
So the reason for all. You'll have to talk to the satellite company about that, I don't know when they did this.
Is that you over in the corner, Gene?
But as you can see, this is, this was not today. But what all this is about is Gina contacted me a couple of weeks ago. Obviously, Hops with the new playground has been a great success and plenty of people are using it and plenty of people parking there. And even before, I mean, five years ago, Gene, we had this situation that the library wanted to reserve some of the spaces. And this is even with the new Hops, this is with the old version of Hops, because, you know, essence, we're having, people were competing for parking spaces. Library patrons felt that they were being shut out between whether it was Hops or people using the athletic fields. For instance, also, because we don't allow parking over in the athletic fields. And for some people, it's a convenient way of getting down the hill to park there at that lot. But now with Hops, you know, just going along, we're, the, I won't say it's a problem has worsened, because I don't want to say it's a problem, but things are so, going so well, but obviously, we're running out of spaces and perish into the various needs. And it won't get any better when school is in session possibly. So Gene asked if we could have a discussion of the interested parties and figure out some possible solutions. So what I have here is at least, so when people are pointing at things, they can, they have a diagram or photograph to point at, showing the current parking lot. Where Hops is, it's not showing the current composition of Hops, because this was taken months ago, but then some of the nearby buildings and the fields and such.
Is, is there, where the parking, the entrance for the school, is there any way to make any of these spots where it's crossed out?
That I think is for buses, is it?
It's a far lane.
It's a far lane. The only place that I see possibly adding any parking spaces would be to the right of the playground, just as you come in, and I don't know if that ground's level enough. That's the problem we have, when that you have enough topography of the product. No, to the right of the playground.
So facing the playground to the right of the playground? Not to the right on the.
More, more towards the open field between the council and the A G and the water department and that.
Tends to drop off a little bit.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a slope there, and that's the only place that I can see we could possibly add, unless we tell people they can't park there, go across the street.
I just, I just did a quick count, it's like forty, give or take one spot in the whole area there.
I think there's like, I think there's forty-two spots because I.
Well, I was trying not to count the handicapped.
Those, I think, those are respected.
Yep.
You know, thankfully, and that's good. And I do want to point out, well, you know, my patron parking is obviously, you know, important to me.
Sure.
It's not just a patron parking problem. It's just getting too small and it's a safety issue. So I've had patrons come in and, you know, obviously say, I couldn't find a parking spot. I had to jump into a staff parking, is that okay? Had to walk across, you know, walk across the street and things like that. I've seen, you know, people turn the patron parking signs around, so that doesn't look like they're parking in patron parking. But I've also had patrons come in and talk about it being a safety issue, you know. So I, you know, when the playground first opened, they were kind of like circling that small thing.
I witnessed some of that.
Trying and waiting for a spot with like, you know, kids running in and out. And so I think it's time to be kind of proactive. We see this only probably getting worse, this situation, but I have no solutions, that's why we guys are here.
Well, I mean, the simple answer is we need to create more parking spots. The bigger question is.
Where?
Where and at what cost and, you know, have to find some funding for that.
Yeah, where would that money come from?
Yeah, that, that's, that's the question.
I smell pretty right too, I thought that.
Are you all set, Gene? Are you all set?
Oh, Jonathan knows, he can interrupt me anytime.
Well, not, not in my house.
I was, forgive me guys, because I was very late, but I didn't know if you talked about possibly, as you come into the parking lot, facing the playground, those spots there to the right. And I know there are trees there and I'd hate to lose them, but that seems to be the flattest, I mean, most logical space to clear out there. I didn't know if you guys had looked at that area at all. I think there's what, four cars or five cars here in this printout, kind of that, spots that face the water department. If we could maybe clear that out, almost all the way to where it slopes down, I think you guys could, we could gain a bunch of spots. And I don't know if that was, again, I apologize.
We just really started the discussion.
Yeah, you didn't miss much.
Alright.
And that's basically what I was talking about when I said to the right.
Yeah, yeah, that seems to be because, because to the, the right of these spots, it really starts to slope off, you know, to the left-hand, looking at the playground. To that right-hand side heading to the water department really drops off, so I think you'd have a big-time grade issue. Try to do any sort of parking over there. But to me, there was, and unfortunately, I hate it because there's three trees there, but I think we might have to make the most sense to lose those and expand that. As you're coming into the parking lot, your right-hand side there.
I think we need to see if we can find some available funds and or appropriate volunteers to do sort of a study, if you will, it's a strong term, but I mean, sort of a layout. To see what we can try to make of that for parking. And then we have to also take into consideration, it's gonna have to be built a little, because we can't be parking on loom or we can't just strip a little bit of loom off and try to pave it. We're gonna have to build it up. And then we have to think about drainage too, which I'm sure we're not really doing any drainage currently. It's probably just all rolling down to the natural pitch. But if we don't do a whole lot of invasive work, we may not need to do much for controlling any water issues. But yeah, that's definitely a need. I think that's something we should find a way to at least start investigating and see what we can put together here, for everybody's benefit.
Well, the, we do have a little bit of funds left, friends of Hops. We were saving here, we have an Eagle Scout that's looking at making a gazebo for us, for the playground, so we were kind of still with a little bit of our money aside to help that Eagle Scout with that project. But, I mean, since it, I don't want to say it's a playground-related problem, but we could, you know, definitely help, help the cause to try to help with parking. So I don't know, I don't know where that stands or what we should do.
I think the first thing we need to do is to find out what the cost factor is gonna be.
Okay.
What the feasibility is of even doing it over there, because we don't know what's underneath that, if that's sand.
Sure.
Also on that smoke. I don't know if that's natural or man-made, looks like it was built up.
Would you like us to take the ball on the, on researching that, or would somebody from the town like to do, or whatever you guys think?
I think what we could do is start maybe with the highway surveyor.
Okay.
And get some insight from him and try to plot it out, what we need. Go to the code book and figure out what we need for size of parking spots, so that we can kind of figure out how many we could possibly get in the area before we start rolling downhill.
Sure.
Because we don't want to be putting retaining walls or any of that stuff in there, that just ruins the cause. But maybe that's a good place to start, then maybe if we have to get some kind of a surveying, you know, plan, we could kind of investigate cost of that.
The only thing I was gonna say, is it something you would have to go, you know, from grass to, you know.
Gravel.
Gravel to then pavement on top of it, or could you say over, you know, over the course of two or three years, we're gonna first go to gravel like that's out by the softball field, by the, by the police station? With the ultimate goal being, we want to get it paved where we can have clearly delineated lines, so you don't have some of the strange parking that happens at softball games.
Well, which you're suggesting is pretty much what we used to have before we paved it. You know, it was, it was an aggregate. But I, I think, even if we were to go that route, we'd still have to remove whatever loom is there, because you'd still sink under it. You just lose the stone, if you will. But, but we could get highway to go over, maybe dig a couple of test holes, we could, you know, that, that wouldn't cost us any serious amount of money. Just to see what we've got and then kind of step-by-step process, but I'm totally on board with trying to do something like that.
I just want to say, Jonathan, thank you, but, you know, offering, you know, the remaining funds or, you know, whatever you have. But my thought is that this is a town now, I mean, they've done their work, they've put in this phenomenal playground. And I'd rather see the town kind of take on the responsibility financially and, you know, whatever, to fix this, you know, situation.
I agree with you.
Instead of like, I'd rather see that go towards the gazebo and.
And maintenance, and maintenance, because that's always a big issue.
Yes, yeah.
We've got it now, we need to take care of it.
But we're, we're, we're looking at whether or not the town agrees that, and some, some have already said to me that the playground is the reason we don't have any parking spaces. You know, I've had people come to me, so that, those same people that become the town meeting says, you know, why should the town pay for something that they created?
Yeah.
And I'm being the devil's advocate, I just want to make sure it's out there.
Well, we need to know what we can do, get a feel for what it's gonna cost and take, and then we can kind of figure out the rest of the logistics, but.
Well, we'll, we'll help, you know, like I say, we don't have a ton of money left, but we'll help out wherever we can, you know, to make it, pardon, to make it a, you know, a finished product.
Alright, why don't we, why don't we go in this direction then? Why don't we have the highway surveyor with Jane and John?
Sure.
You know, and discuss what, what the possibilities are, see what we'd need.
At least get his thoughts.
Get his thoughts on what to do before we go any further.
Can we give them the okay to cut down the trees?
Well, I think that's premature at this point, but, you know, we can do that when we need to. But maybe dig a couple of holes to.
See what's there.
See what's underneath, you know, we wouldn't have to take trees down for that.
You had a statement there?
Um, I had something on that, sorry. I'm good.
Okay. Anything further, Gene?
Um, no.
Well, thank you.
Oh, so I'll just wait to hear from someone about setting up a meeting to.
I'll send a note to you, to John and to Steve, and basically say to the three of you, hey, get your heads together, see what we can put together at this point.
Unless you want to give everybody that parks over there a library card, so they can say, you're gonna use the library.
And you'll let me know too, Charlie, because I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, participate in that.
Thanks for coming in, John.
No worries.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks to Sandy.
Always a pleasure.
Chief, if you want to talk about motorcycles, I mean, while we had you in grade thirty, there's no reason it's not for.
I'll be quick. So basically, how this came about, the Summit Chiefs meeting, there was a discussion about Summit sponsoring a motorcycle school for, to certify motorcycle riders. Halifax is a spot that, you know, never had a motor unit. I, I enjoy, you know, motorcycles, I was in charge of the motor unit in New Bedford. We had four bikes in our motor unit. I think it's got a lot of benefits, as far as, you know, for the town, community policing, traffic enforcement. Kind of brings the police officer closer to the community and not close behind, behind a cruiser. So I reached out to one of my contacts at Seacoast Harley in New Hampshire. And kind of one of the, you know, gauges his interest, or is like some, some tips on, on the lease, on a small lease plan. To kind of like try the motorcycle in Halifax, see what kind of feedback we get, not only the community, but the police officers. So he was, he would be willing to do a six-month trial lease for three twenty-five a month. So that basically would be nineteen fifty for the whole entire lease. To fund that lease, I'm probably, I would be looking at using the gift account that we get from, from grants, from Walmart and so forth. And then if the program was successful and the town decided to eventually either buy their own motorcycle or continue the lease, I could put a line item for the next, next town meeting. The motorcycles that we would be leasing, again, through my contacts, would be one of the, the New Bedford Leasing motorcycles that are gonna be traded in. They're, they've had their bikes on the lease program. They're going away from the lease program and they're gonna actually purchase new bikes. So they have, there's actually a choice of four motorcycles. The one that I would be looking at would be one with eighteen hundred miles. So it's very, very low mileage on the bikes. They come fully equipped, so there wouldn't be any extra cost other than just putting our emblem in it. And I think Scott Sterling's excited that he's, might be even getting a paint job a lot out of the deal, because he doesn't like the white motorcycle, but that's beside the point. So the, the issue is that there's a lot of things that, that need to, you know, first of all, I would need approval. And there's a class starting Monday in town, being sponsored by Summit, like I said. And I have an operator, Officer Schleif, that's willing to go to the class. It's no cost to the town, Summit is putting it together, it's a forty-hour course. What's gonna happen is the federal requirement for more, for police motorcycles is gonna increase to eighty hours. Eighty hours is kind of a lot to take a guy off, off shift, off patrol. Forty hours is a lot more manageable, he can, you know, actually go to the training, come back to work, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a cost in that issue. So what I would do is reach out to Seacoast tomorrow with the hopes that he could actually give us a bike to use for the class. This way, Officer Schleif is certified, wanting if the bikes in New Bedford are ready, then we can just transition, you know, him into, into that, into that lot. He would be, it would not, wouldn't be an additional patrol. Basically, the one out there, it would be basically if he's assigned to the cruiser, instead of operating the cruiser, he'd be operating a motorcycle. Like he'd respond to calls the same way. He could actually get the calls a little quicker, especially like, you know, complaints, uh, on Facebook about one oh six being a parking lot.
Yeah.
He can zigzag it to, to, to that, to get to calls. So that's another benefit of, of, of the motor unit. Uh, and you know, part of the only disadvantage that I can see is maybe the weather.
Weather, yeah.
And I know Boston, obviously they got a bigger city. They run their bikes probably pretty much year round. Unless it's icy or snowing, uh, it gets a little cold for the, for the guys, but you know, but that's, that's what we sound like. So that's, um, you know, it's basically a plan.
And, and there's the assumption that Officer Schleif already knows how to ride a bike?
It's an assumption that Officer Schleif, uh, successfully passes the course. Cause, uh, and, and I've taken the course myself and I've already told him that he better be, you know, ready to pick up the bike many, many times. Uh, cause it is a very demanding course. Um, it's not a one of these courses where you show up and they sign you off. Um, there's, you know, you basically ride four days, four and a half days and then on the fifth day, uh, they have a course set up and then you have to successfully pass a course to get certified. Yeah, and Dr., uh, Dr. Schleif, yeah. Uh, Officer Schleif does ride a bike.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know what, how it compares to Harley. I'm not sure what type of bike he has, but, uh, but I.
Well, at least that's a start.
The start, yeah, yeah.
Those doors are kickstanders.
Yeah, and, and I know Sergeant Bender is also a, a motorcycle enthusiast. Uh, obviously, once we have the bike, then if he wants to go to the training class, at least he has a bike.
Right.
The, the course requires one rider, one bike. Uh, I know the chief in Carver actually has one bike. He's got four riders that he wants to certify. Um, so.
One at a time?
Uh, uh, yeah, he's not to do it one at a time. Unless he can, you know, get some leased bikes down from Seacoast.
Comments?
Um, I, I have a tendency to defer to the chief on this kind of stuff. If he thinks this has some value and it sounds like he started out, sounds like the money's available, I'd be good with it.
I'm okay with a trial, but I think long-term that might be a finance issue.
Yeah, definitely. And that's what, that's why I kind of want to, you know, try it out first. See what kind of feedback we get from both the community and, and the officers. I mean, I know that, uh, you know, Halifax has, you know, high population of motorcycle riders that enjoy the roadways. I think it's another way for, for the police to connect with, with that, uh, you know, that part of the community. Um, you know, we, we can utilize it for parades, for, for, you know, for funeral processions. It's just, you know, kind of get, get some closer to the community.
It's a trial thing. I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
I'm good for six months and then we discuss it at the end of the time.
See how it works out.
Especially since at this point in time, the money's not going to have to, the land's already available.
The count is gonna, it's gonna, this.
Recovered.
Like a donation from Walmart for this program.
It's not going to cost us anything to send a man to the program as being sponsored.
Right.
I, I would move that we allow the chief to go for it, which is, I don't want to call it an experiment, but.
Trial, trial, trial.
Trial, yeah. That sounds better.
So I, I won't, I won't throw my motorcycle boots away there. I was about to throw them away the other day. I'm like, I know, I mean, I just want to. A little lonesome. So, is there any other questions?
All her favor?
Hi, hi.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, chief.
You okay Barbara?
Good night.
I know.
So, since we had an appointment.
Chief, you can quit avoiding me now. I'm, I'm not going to come by.
I feel so bad. Every time you come by there, I, I, I'm out. I'm not going to be in town long. I'm going to be in Dallas. So don't come by tomorrow to visit. But I'll be in Thursday and Friday.
I'm starting to get a complaint.
So there were a couple of people just came up the driveway and I know that Joan said you, you always comes early for, then for appointments. So I'm going to go check to see if one of those people is Joan. We can see her and then do whatever executive session business is necessary.
Do you want to take a five minute break then?
Sure. If that's okay with the board.
Yeah, five minutes is good.
Five minute break.
So just to go over for our TV audience, um, the board has been working with the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife at the possible purchase of a town-owned lot off of Aldana Road for twenty years.
At least.
This is sort of, um, a sec, this got a, and in some cases, in a way, sort of a spinoff of, um, the, when they, DFW had purchased the Northern Cranberries property and then subsequently had to work with us on some financial dealings and land transactions over in that area. The next step in that process, Joan's been talking to the board a couple of times during the last six or eight months, is, was an appraisal that was done through, um, DFW. The appraisals come in, I sent the two of you a copy. I didn't, since you don't do email. The thing is, the appraisal was seventy-five pages long. If you want a copy, I'll print it out for you, but.
How long does it take to say the property's worth this much?
I guess I could have done.
Seventy-five pages.
I guess I could have done an executive.
Well, most of us. God. Talk about getting rid of trees in a hurry.
I know.
So, if you want to go over what the results were.
Oh, oh, well, okay.
So we have it on, on the record.
Oh, sure. Okay. So the appraisal came in at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars because as Tom had said months ago, it's probably going to appraise at two house slots and that's what the appraisal did. The property however, and you're Gordon?
Yes.
And I'm Joan Pierce. Nice to meet you Gordon. Is that, um, the town does not own one hundred percent interest of this property. It is, the town owns fifty percent undivided interest in conjunction with the Plymouth County, which owns.
Technically inhabitants of Plymouth County.
So we're inhabitants of Plymouth County.
Yeah, so should we get a percentage of that too?
Well, that's between the town and the inhabitants of Plymouth County.
Talk about that. What are we, one percent?
Well, you know, so we should get fifty-one percent.
And so, so there is that issue that, that the town, for however it came about, I had no idea. The town and the inhabitants of Plymouth County ended up with fifty-fifty undivided interest in the property. Now fishing game's interest in, I'll use another, the reason we would like to acquire this property is because, uh, this is a map of part of the Peterson Swamp Wildlife Management Area. It's a total of two hundred and fifty acres and so it continues a little bit down that way. And there is upland on this property. There's also some wetland and we would like to acquire it because it would make a really good public access for a couple of cars that we would create. So, because right now with Peterson Swamp, for whatever reason, when we acquired it decades ago, it didn't come with a really very good parking, if at all.
True.
Yeah. So the town acquired this particular piece of property when it acquired from Bay State, another hundred and seventy-eight acre parcel somewhere else in town, to the south, I believe it is. Anyway, so there's this piece. They also acquired at the same time this triangular piece, which we're not talking about acquiring at this moment. That also has a long history with the town. And there it is. So that's kind of.
The parcel that they're looking to purchase from us is probably the only upland there.
Yes.
It just works out that way.
So this piece is also?
Pretty much.
Oh, yeah. You can tell by the color, these are Atlantic white cedar trees, which are, oh my gosh, you just see those are, you know, wonderful. And which is one reason why we also like, uh, found the Peterson Swamp Wildlife Management Area to be ecologically very important. There is also a beautiful woods road on this parcel that doesn't really show up very well. You can see little traces of it that then go down to where there's a water.
We wanted to have that deck.
Yeah. Uh, anyway, so the property has excellent potential for some public access, at least for a short walk. And that's, but we're really here to try and finish the, uh, debt that we owe the town of Halifax.
Which is roughly?
Fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
How much are you now offering for the entire parcel?
Well, we'd like to pay a total of a hundred and fifty thousand.
Of course you would.
Yes, right. And so, which.
Which, which might, not to cut you off. I understand you had an appraisal. But my contention is in the real world, a buildable lot is worth now at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
All right. So you're looking at, I'm looking at three hundred thousand dollars. And if we were, in fact, to come into agreement with Plymouth County or the inhabitants of Plymouth County, um, we'd be looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each on, on the market.
If you want, you go to the trouble of subdividing the property.
Yeah, it's not that expensive.
That's right.
Yeah. I don't think they were looking for that much.
No, the Plymouth County from.
Fifty thousand.
Uh, well, the, trying to be equitable to everybody, um, I had suggested that perhaps the two towns, excuse me.
Two entities.
The, the two entities would accept seventy-five thousand each, which is.
And the way it would work is this, we'd have to buy Plymouth County's share first. Then we would be in full ownership. We would then be able to sell full ownership. Cause they, they don't want to deal with two entities at the same time. They want to deal with one owner.
The law doesn't allow you to do that.
Well, there's also the issue of we can't pay more than appraised value. And how do we appraise a fifty percent undivided interest? There are no comp sales for it. So the simplest thing, when we had the appraisal done, we did ask the appraiser, make the assumption that the town of Halifax owns a hundred percent interest.
But you're not even paying the appraisal price.
That's correct.
Okay. So I, I just want to be clear with everybody that.
Okay, but the appraisal, Tom, does make the assumption that the town of Halifax owns a hundred percent, which it doesn't. There would be some expenses involved, maybe not a whole lot.
It's still, you're, you're still only offering up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total.
That's right, that's right.
Which in my mind is about the value of one lot.
One house lot, okay.
And you owe us fifty grand, which keeps going on. Cause every time we deal with fisheries and wildlife, we get shortchanged. And we keep kicking this can down the road.
Why are we short fifty-two thousand dollars right now?
Because.
There was another parcel.
There's another parcel on Elm Street.
That, that we acquired from the town. We had hoped that it would appraise.
For what they owe us.
Two hundred.
Way, way back. We'll take a second for that. Northern Cranberries.
When I first got elected. Put it that way.
Back when dinosaurs were the earth.
The, the, the whole thing here is.
Northern, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say that Troy and I had institutional memory. We've been around long enough to remember all the details of this thing. I'm sorry Charlie.
No. So Northern Cranberries, that was purchased by the state.
Yeah.
We had some legal battles with the state because of the question of whether or not there were rollback taxes and such associated with land because it had been zoned agricultural.
Okay.
And then obviously lost its agricultural role. We settled for money and land. We got the land, we got the money.
Which was the parcel on Elm Street, seventeen point six acres.
But not all the money that was promised. So DFW said, okay, we'll buy the parcel back from you that we actually had given to you, or, you know, the state legislature approved. Well, the parcel still didn't meet the value of what was owed to us.
Their appraisal.
Yes.
Right, that's right.
And so we didn't get as much money out of the deal as we should, as we would have liked to under the original agreements that were signed. So that's where the fifty-some odd thousand dollars.
And the offer was that they would continue to pursue other property that we owned that we would not have any particular interest in.
Right.
Which I don't qualify this as that kind of property in, in my interpretation of it.
So who owns this piece?
The town.
And the inhabitants.
And the inhabitants of Plymouth County, yeah.
Well, you mean, were you pointing at the triangle?
The triangle.
Yeah, same thing, same, same, same thing.
Same thing, as well as the hundred and seventy-eight acre parcel elsewhere.
So, so ergo my comment of we always get shortchanged.
Yeah.
I mean, this one appraises and they're not even offering us the appraisal.
Right.
So why isn't Fishing Game looking at this piece too?
Well, the town might want to hold on to that. At one point, uh, the town.
Oh, wanted to do a swap because we wanted to improve the road, yeah.
We have Aldana Road. If you see the Aldana Road there to the north. It's been in the back freezer for a long time, but the idea is eventually we'd like to pave Aldana.
Yeah.
But that means getting it, a, a right of way that's large enough to handle paving it.
Okay.
Which means taking a very small slice from the state, not from the state, from the county.
So the county owns this piece?
From us, from us.
Okay, that was the trade off. So from this, we'd have to trade with the state for a very small slice. Basically, you know, very thin strip along the southern boundary of Aldana Road, which would be owned by the state. They would trade that for that triangle piece.
And that's more usable to them than that little piece going down the road?
So that's why we've been holding that in reserve for, but the thing is, as we've all been talking, the county plays a role in it because they own the triangle piece too. And like I, we talked.
They'll appraise from that.
We did, we talked about, I mean, we talked with the county about this twenty years ago and it just didn't go anywhere with the, whatever the numbers were then. It's something that's, like I said, it's in the back freezer, I.
Well, we didn't push it either, so.
But the county said that they would take seventy-five thousand dollars for this piece?
Yeah.
Yes.
For one half of.
As their share, as their share of that.
They want fifty percent of what they're offering us.
Yeah, well, that's what I proposed. I'm not trying to.
Yeah, I see. Well, if, if I'm the county, I'm not accepting anything less than that. There's no reason to.
Is there a reason why we couldn't ask the county to sell us both of these pieces right now?
Well, they, they would have to sell those. They only own half of the property. They don't own the whole piece, so.
We'd be buying it. They wouldn't be buying it. We'd be buying.
We'd be buying it and then we'd sell it to the Fish and Wildlife.
Not, not, not right away until we came up with a trade. I think it makes the deal too complicated.
Yes, yeah.
But if we just deal with the two, I'm going to call them two lots.
Sure, the blue one.
Yeah. If we just deal with this, we've got one thing. We thought throwing this in the mix now, we're going to have all kinds of other things. We can deal with that separately later, when and if we want to take that strip along the street.
And the triangle piece is not buildable? No one thinks it's buildable, so.
I've, I've actually walked some of that.
So have I. That's why I know about the aqua park.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting. Cause it drops off really quick off.
You start hearing the banjo open that's.
Yeah. It, it really comes down to, in the past, we've had interest in, in trying to work this out with the state. Although I was skeptical then that it was not going to appraise for what we needed it to appraise for. And that's my problem with it. We keep getting asked to take less for something all the time.
Yes.
And, and like I said, we just keep kicking this can down the street. So they're going to take care of this and we're going to take short money for it. And then they're going to say, well, we don't owe you nothing anymore, or anything anymore. And you had to have been through the process to feel the animosity.
So is there a reason why we can't sell them this piece of property with the agreement that they'll give us this right away?
I would keep the two separate. I, I'm, I don't speak for Fishing Game, but we.
They did have to be surveyed and.
Well, the only reason why I'm asking that is if you're asking the town to accept less than what it appraised at, it would make sense to give us something.
Yeah, I, I understand where you're going.
So if we could fix Aldana Road, that, that's a long, that issue that's been forever, if we could fix this all at the same time, it would seem to make sense seeing that the.
Then we have to deal with the county too to get their, their piece.
Yeah.
But the county wants seventy-five thousand dollars for this piece.
I understand where Gordon's going, which is basically, we buy our.
Negotiated.
We buy the share from the county. We now own the whole thing.
Right, now it's dealing with fisheries and wildlife.
For a hundred and fifty, we will sell you both the two lots and the slip.
Uh, well.
Gordon's out of the driveway.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm thinking. So if we, if this is worthless, basically, because it's not a buildable lot, then we buy the county, these two pieces from the county for seventy-five thousand. We turn around, we sell this to you for a hundred and fifty and with the right of way.
So what we're basically doing then is selling them, buying it for seventy-five thousand dollars. Cause we're not getting what the value of the land is.
I, I get that, but if we could get the road fixed, I think that would be more worth than seventy-five thousand dollars.
It'd be better if they were going to give us the strip and pay for the, the highway to be paved and take the land.
Yeah, I would keep, honestly, I mean.
You, you have to have dealt with fisheries and wildlife to appreciate where Joan's coming from here and, and where my suggestion is.
I would keep the si, the highway strip separate.
Keep it simple.
Honestly, because I don't, I mean, this, this happened a long time ago. We had title work and appraisal and all this stuff. I don't ever remember anyone objecting to this, to your getting this strip as a swap for this piece of swamp, so.
I guess to be, um, if there's animosity and feeling like the town is getting less than the fair value, then I, I would think that I would like to see the department settle this issue first.
But, well, thinking.
But then do we, then do we have to still negotiate it out with the inhabitants of Plymouth County? Cause.
Oh, for this you would, not the swamp.
Not, not the swamp. No, I see.
But, but just if there's a feeling of animosity towards the two entities, it would make sense if.
Well, the animosity.
I don't, I don't think there's any animosity coming from the, because they, they seem to have the upper hand.
They've taken advantage of us time after time, in my humble opinion.
They've taken advantage of us time after time, in my humble opinion. But if, if there's animosity, there's clearly animosity on my part, not to the point where I would deprive us from something. But again, I think that's worth a hundred and fifty grand on our side.
You have to get the whole history.
And I think we can still make a swap for the old land later.
The reason, the reason this young man feels the way he feels, and then some of it may too, is that when the land was first sold from Northland, the state first bought it, okay, they paid Hanson a handsome amount of money for their share of the property.
And ignored us.
And it didn't, it didn't even put us in the picture.
It was the board of assessors that went after them.
Yeah.
We, you know, and, and it was, we ended up with a special act of the legislature and all kinds of crazy things.
Yeah.
And they have special legislation dealt with, just so we can get our money and stop that out.
And, and then we had a deal, and then they didn't have any money to do the surveying. So we, that's when we had to go to the state.
Oh, okay.
And have a bill, yeah, I mean, you know, they tried to roadblock it at every single point they could. And, and it wasn't just my imagination, that was really on their end.
I, I would agree with Tom, the town was dealt very rudely.
Okay.
It really was.
So is there any reason that we can't do this project as well?
Well, I would keep it simple, and the, stick with the issues. Now, let, let me just add a little bit more, we do intend, and the state, Fish and Game, has been good about creating public access that's very usable for Burridge Pond, uh, in the town of Halifax. And so, this will stay open space, we cannot sell it and recoup more than we paid for it, we can't sell it at all, and we would be spending our funds, we don't do this quickly, it may take a couple of years, but you would then, the town of Halifax would end up with a nice, small parking area that's mostly going to be used by residents of the town of Halifax, perhaps Plymouth, because they're close by. But this is, uh, the Peterson Swamp is not a large area, it does not attract people from southeastern Massachusetts. This is something that we feel will benefit mostly the town residents.
Most people don't.
But we're only talking about a couple of parking spots, right?
That, that's right, because.
So, I mean, so we're not talking about, hey, everybody come down, you know.
That's right, it's not that type of place, we, Burridge, we have some large parking areas, although they're still not immense, sometimes they're big because people bring horse trailers in. But they're, but Burridge is extremely popular. So this, otherwise, we tend to do parking areas for a couple of cars, we like to keep visitation low, this is for habitat and the wildlife, but that is something that we would be taking on ourselves, not asking the town for anything. Uh, Tom is right, it is less than the appraised value, I'm trying to strike a balance with. Now, this is a property I didn't realize, I mean, that, what the town had in mind for it, and I have said, give me some other choices, this is the only one that I know about, that we would say, yeah, we'll, we'll pay good money for this piece of property.
But not appraised at.
Well, the issue we would, my committee would get back to is, we owe the town fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars. We're willing to spend a hundred and fifty thousand, which is almost a hundred thousand. Now, granted, you have to share it with the inhabitants of Plymouth County, which is a problem. But we are, in effect, even though it's not the appraised value, we are paying the town something more than the amount that we owe the town.
Yeah, yeah, but you're getting something in exchange. Yeah, yeah, it's not like.
It's not, it's not as if all of a sudden you, you're saying that we, we, you have a piece of property that's only worth fifty thousand dollars, but we're gonna give you a hundred and fifty for it, cause we owe you fifty-two.
Yes.
That's, that's not the case.
You're actually subtracting the fifty thousand.
That's, that's right, I mean, so the town would only be getting an extra twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. But I would also say that the property will stay in the condition that it's in, with the exception of we would, which I think is a benefit for the town residents, creation of a various amount of parking area, so that mostly people in town could then get whatever enjoyment they could get out of it.
We couldn't get the money we wanted that was owed to us because it did not appraise up at Burridge Pond.
You mean the seventeen?
Y- y- yeah.
Yeah, the most recent, that's right.
So, so we took less money.
That's right.
Because we couldn't get the appraisal.
Right.
Now we can't even get the appraisal.
Well, we get the appraisal, but we don't get the amount of money that has been appraised at.
That's right, because we don't owe you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But beyond that, we couldn't get our money because it didn't appraise. If we didn't owe you any, if you didn't owe us any money.
Would we pay a quarter of a million for this? Well, we wouldn't. That's, that's the problem, I mean, Peterson Swamp is a lovely area, but.
It's not worth it to you, is what you're saying.
What, what you're saying to me is that, uh, you're gonna buy my car, my car's worth ten thousand dollars, you wanna give me five thousand dollars, but I gotta put brand-new tires on the car before I give it to you.
No.
Yeah, because you're getting something in exchange, you're getting more than what the, what the company were.
We couldn't get our money because it didn't appraise.
That's right.
Now, we're not gonna get our money even though it appraises.
Well, it depends how you view, we, we don't wanna pay.
I understand, you, I mean, I can, I can appreciate that argument, but I'm just following the logic from one place to another.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I'm going, I know it's worth a hundred and fifty to us.
Right.
Our half, be- because that's what they're selling for.
Yeah.
Now, you can argue we don't want houses built on it, I can appreciate that argument. But even at your relatively low appraisal price, in my opinion, of two and a quarter, we're not even getting that, and some of that you owe us.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I mean, it, it isn't like we're getting a hundred and twelve-five, and we're saying we're getting a hundred and twelve-five less fifty-two thousand. We're getting less than less.
That's right.
So you're, in fact, actually only offering us ninety-nine thousand dollars?
Well, I, I.
Less than that.
I had suggested that the hundred and fifty thousand be split between the town and the inhabitants of Plymouth County. Because otherwise, my committee is faced with paying, you know, we're still looking at what we owe the town and trying to resolve that.
Oh, so, is, I guess, what I don't understand is, why can't the department just send us the check for what it owes?
Because they have to tie it to land purchases, is my understanding.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so now you have the opportunity to tie it to a land purchase.
And they don't wanna pay the appraised at.
Right.
So why would the town make this decision?
Well, it's, um, if the town has another piece of property, then I'd be happy to look at it.
Then that's not gonna appraise, and then we're gonna still be kicking the can down.
I mean, I, I don't know, probably.
Probably, we're gonna keep kicking this can.
I mean, if there's a small piece that, well, I'd have to still appraise at at least fifty-two thousand five hundred.
That's what I'm saying, I, I mean.
So then we're not getting anything for a value, if, if, if the department owes us fifty-two thousand dollars.
Right.
And then you're telling us that you'll only give us the fifty-two thousand dollars if we sell you another piece of property that appraises for fifty-two thousand dollars? We're not getting anything.
Of course not.
We're losing fifty-two thousand dollars.
Well, it, it depends.
Yeah, but typically, a fifty-two thousand dollar parcel isn't something that we're gonna do much with.
No, 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 I, I.
I know you know that. But, but like I said, it just keeps getting worse, and you have to have been there with the argument that.
No, 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 I, I'm on board now that I understand that.
Yeah.
The department owes us the money.
Right.
And they understand that, so why aren't they offering, if, if you wanted to buy it for a hundred and fifty, why isn't the department offering us two hundred and two thousand?
Two hundred and fifty thousand?
Two hundred and two thousand.
Because you're offering a hundred and fifty, with the fifty-two you owe us, if it comes out to be a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and two thousand dollars.
We'd still have to buy it from the county for seventy-five, now, I don't know how the county would feel about it, if we bought it for seventy-five and sold it for a hundred and fifty, there's a whole nother dimension to this thing.
Yeah, I, which I'm not.
We've maintained the property all these years, it's our responsibility.
So, no, but it, I understand that if, if you feel the purchase price is a hundred and fifty, to buy that piece of property, why aren't you offering us two hundred and two to settle the debt?
Well, one is that we owe the town, and I understand the property's worth more, but we're trying, without paying more than we have to, what we wanna do is settle the debt with the town of Halifax. And then this property, I would argue, stays just the way it is, with the exception of a couple of cars, so.
I'm, I'm okay with that aspect, but the town, so now you're saying, oh wait, now this is worth to the town possibly two lots, so that's three hundred thousand dollars, we already owe fifty-two thousand, so now you're gonna, the town's gonna lose two hundred thousand dollars on this deal?
Well, you don't own the whole property.
No, 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 but you're, but, but.
If we did own the whole property, say the county had nothing to do with this, would you still be offering us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or would you be offering us a two hundred?
I think we'd be offering you a hundred and fifty thousand, because it's not, you know, Peterson Swamp is, it's a lovely place.
I understand, I understand, it's not worth anymore to you folks. I mean, the bottom line.
Yeah.
That's all it's worth to you.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna be not buy, you're buying it as, to not do anything with.
Yes.
You're not buying it to develop it.
Oh, absolutely.
No, no, I understand that, so the value, as Tom's pointing out, is worth less in the sense of how you're going to use it than the appraised value for its highest use. You're not going to use it for its highest use, the value to you is less.
That's right, it's valuable, its value to us is as a, a additional habitat and as a place for people to park, a couple of cars.
And that value's only worth a hundred thousand dollars to the department?
Well, we're paying a hundred and fifty.
No, 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 but it's only worth a hundred thousand dollars to the department, cause you're gonna pay us back the fifty-two that you owe us, and then you're asking the town.
At the end of the day, they don't even think about that, they're, they're.
No, no, but, but then you're asking the town to fit, to split the fifty-two thousand dollars with the county, so we're only getting twenty-two thousand dollars on that value.
No, we're asking the town to split in round numbers the hundred thousand.
Right, right, but if the town comes up with seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, but we're still, yeah, we're still gonna have to give them seventy-five, yeah.
So.
So, I'm telling you, we always end up the short end of the stick with them.
The deal, the deal doesn't make any sense from my perspective to get the fifty-two, cause you're asking us to split the fifty-two thousand that you owe us.
You are, yeah.
With the county, so now we're only gonna get.
You're gonna get an extra, in round numbers, twenty-five thousand.
No.
Because you would be paid, you would be paid seventy-five thousand.
Twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Yeah, right, so because you would get seventy-five thousand, and Plymouth County would get seventy-five thousand.
So you're, so, uh, I, I don't think the deal makes any sense for the town to make.
So, so you would only be getting twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars more than what we owe you?
No.
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
But you're getting, but you're getting so much more.
Right, yes, exactly.
Then?
Well, but again, we look at it not for development purposes, but what is it worth to us to put in a, a little parking area and to get another seven point six seven acres of habitat as part of Peterson Swamp?
So, what is the other option for the department to pay us the fifty-two that you owe us?
There is none, unless we find another parcel, that appraises for fifty-two thousand dollars, that they want.
And then some, yeah, that's right.
And some, because they're not even paying appraised prices, so.
Well, sometimes we do, but in this case, that's a lot of money. That's okay, well.
I'm telling you, this, this, just, yeah, and I love Joan, and I, I feel, I feel for.
Forte-ing in that position.
Short, short of a situation where they value a parcel more than the appraised value, we will not, we get.
But, but this one, they value it even less than the appraised value.
But, but to play catch, to play catch-up on the fifty-two-five, the only way we catch up is they have something, they, we have something they want, which is worth more to them than the appraised.
Or the fifty-two thousand.
The only way, the only way we're gonna get what the, what they owe us to go have special legislation put through saying that they owe us the money and they need to pay us.
So why aren't we pursuing that aspect with the state?
It's gotten so muddled, I don't know that we can even present it in a rational way. I, I think it would be very difficult.
Yeah, I can't, I can't play on this.
Who are the, who are the eighty, other eighty-one state reps and twenty senators, they're gonna say, oh yeah, here, have a check. That's the problem. Well, what we had to go through just to get the special act.
Yeah.
We had to go in and have a legislative conference meeting, I mean, it was, it was involved.
It, it was terrible, as you can see.
But it, it doesn't make any sense from my perspective to sell this piece of property to the department and take even less, and then purchase, cause you're asking us to split the money with the county.
I'm gonna give you a pair of shoes, no socks.
Fifty percent interest in the property.
We, we know that, but.
But we, we could go buy the property from the county, right?
You could.
Right, for seventy-five thousand.
For seventy-five thousand, and then we could tell you that we want two hundred.
Well, we don't know for sure we could do it, but, but theoretically, yeah.
Yeah, because I said to the county, we're offering a hundred and fifty thousand.
And did you explain to the county that you owe us fifty-two thousand?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And they don't care.
Yeah, that's.
Cause I mean, for, Gordon, as you, as was pointed out by Troy, potential, we've been maintaining that property, the county has no interest, they're never gonna use it, so this is free money to them.
Ah, yeah, but it's even more free money.
They didn't even know.
Right.
That's right.
They didn't even know, I know because I'm on the advisory committee, they didn't even know they had an interest in this property over there.
So, so from my perspective, the only way it would make sense to do this would be to get this road fixed, would be the value of the fifty-two thousand dollars.
But then you've got the cost of fixing, this has nothing to do with me, so I don't wanna.
No, 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 but if, if, if you tie this all together, then you could see that it makes sense to get the, to get the road fixed has an actual value to the residents in town. Right, and you have that value.
Assuming we can go into the wetlands to do.
Yeah.
But you have something of value that the town needs, which is that, so tying, tying everything together and getting it all done in one shot is the only way I see to sell the lot for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and just get it done, and say, we got something for value.
When do you meet with your committee?
We got something on the county.
Probably early September.
Cause we need the road fixed. It's gonna be a collective.
It, it doesn't, we don't compare often, but if you want me to, I, I don't know how far that swap got.
It got stuck at the county, I would have to pull the paperwork out, it's, it's twenty years ago now.
It got stuck at the county, even though, not because of the sliver, it must've gotten.
Well, basically, I, I wanna say it was plugged, but basically, there wasn't a particular interest in the county about it, and it just.
They weren't gonna benefit in any way.
So, so the benefit to the county is the seventy-five thousand dollars that we're gonna have to pay, then to get this all done.
Change the complexion of it a little bit.
Yeah, I, I doubt that there was money involved, I.
No, it wasn't a money issue, it was just, the gears weren't, the gears were not moving there.
Cause there was no interest in it.
But this, this.
Could help along, cause they could always use money.
You had a board of county commissioners that really didn't know what the, they were doing at that time. And they didn't really care about what was going on, they would sell a lot of property to pay off all their bills, so they wouldn't look to give anything out.
Well, to your point, that makes sense, e- e- even taking the triangle out of it for the time being. If they were offering a hundred and fifty plus.
That sliver?
That sliver.
There is a survey plan showing the sliver, we have a copy.
I mean, I could make an argument for that, to your point, yeah.
Then, then the town's receiving something of value.
Some, some benefit, but for that money we're not getting.
Sure.
And we're still getting less value for the property than what we could get.
I don't think that's gonna change.
But it might, but what it might be is that it's worth the fifty-two-five.
To get that road fixed.
Right, or at least get it set up so we couldn't sometime, yeah, unintended down the road, get it fixed.
I, I would think that you would want to have the sliver conveyed to the town.
Yeah, yes.
So.
Now, the county doesn't own that, right?
Right, it's just.
So, it's, it's just the state, right?
That's right.
So we, we buy the, we buy the county's share.
Right.
Of this.
We then trade a hundred and fifty plus the seven acres, sorry, for, for the, for a hundred and fifty, you and the sliver, we trade you for the seven, yeah.
I think so.
I, I think the town actually gets something of value.
That, that, that has merit.
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
That has merit.
So, so what I.
We're still getting less than it's worth, but.
So, but, I, I understand the, the reason not to try to do this little triangle here, but to me, it would make sense to do everything all at once and be done.
Well, we can sell it to them later.
But we're not, we're not gonna get anything for, for that, they're not gonna give us five thousand dollars for this.
Well, we could.
And plus, you gotta give half of it to the inhabitants of the county.
But, but I'm saying, if we can get this all done in one shot and it's done, and then you get this piece as well.
Well, we'd have, we'd have to buy, arrange to buy that from the county too.
But I, but I'm saying, buy, buy both of these pieces for seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yes, 'cause we will argue, I mean.
The swamp is swamp, that's swamp.
This isn't worth appraising.
No, 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 you couldn't even get out there to appraise it.
Appraise it, you're never seeing it.
I'm seeing it come back.
So, we have, uh, I, I have a thick file on this at the office.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah, um, that has a copy of the survey plan for this sliver. Uh, I don't, we'll have to compare notes to see where it got hung up.
Yeah, we'll have to make sure we're getting enough of what we need, yeah.
Y- yeah, but there was a survey plan specifically for that?
Yeah, I do remember that, I, I remember it.
Yeah, and so.
I'll be talking to the advisory board about, about this very issue.
Okay, and, uh, so the sliver doesn't include Plymouth County.
Nope, no, so that, that makes it cleaner.
Yep, so, uh, let's, I'll find out before our meeting, our meeting in September. Whenever, we don't have a date yet, that's just, they're looking at end of August, early September. And so over the course of the summer, I should find out what steps do we have to go through. There'll probably, I'm sure there'll be Article ninety-seven legislation, if it didn't happen already, and it sounds like it didn't.
I don't think so.
Okay, 'cause we probably didn't pursue it when.
Yeah.
Uh, and so we would then have to do the Article ninety-seven legislation. And then, but there is a legal description for the property with the survey.
Yeah, it's always that close on record and we have reference to that.
And we're not talking about a purchase of this sliver, it's only this, which is already appraised. So, uh, if we were willing to give it up once before in exchange for this, uh, I would think that we still would, it's twenty years later, different people, but, um.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have, I don't, we do wanna resolve it.
Just keep the kiss principle, kiss principle.
That's right, keep it simple, which we, I think we can do that.
Okay.
I mean, there's already a lot of work that went into that.
But the deal with the county should be for both of these people, but, both of these parcels, right?
Yeah, I, I don't think they'll check to that, I mean, that's nothing.
Yeah, and, and we would, we would appreciate that also, that we get this triangle and then we don't have to worry about any, anybody else.
Unless it's worth fifty-two thousand dollars.
Are you gonna be talking to Frank, he talks to the county commissioners?
I can, but I wasn't planning on it. I mean, Frank and I, and we've been trading emails between the three of us, Joe, myself, and Frank. And I can give him a mock, how do you wanna do this, why don't you give him an update and say, hey, we might be interested in buying, or interested in both of them.
Or I can send an email to you and to Frank saying this is what transpired.
How it's evolved, yeah.
Because I had said to Frank, I'll be happy to come to your next county commissioners' meeting, which I think is July twenty-fifth. Just so that I, are you gonna be there, Troy?
I'm on the chair board.
Oh.
You're the advisory board.
That's not commissioners.
No, this is the commissioners.
I'm on, I'm on, I'm, the vice chair is here.
Right, for the executive board.
The executive board.
But this will be before the county commissioners. But I, whoever is there is there, um, I've never met them to answer any questions.
We have to vote as an advisory committee, so then we go, we don't have to purchase any property or know anything about it.
Okay, well, then do I have to come before your advisory board?
Yes, you do.
Well, let's get it all straightened out.
It's better that, look, at least it's Troy, not Tom.
Although I'm the alternate if you can't make it. I could get sick.
But no, I agree, let's get rid of this triangle and get it part of Peterson Swamp, we would appreciate that, which gives us more motivation.
At first, I didn't think it was worth the aggravation of trying to put this all together, but the more I'm thinking about it, the more we've vetted it, I think it has some merit.
I think it's a great idea, bro.
Yeah, it, it does, and that is the leverage, we want this, we want to get this resolved, uh, we would like the triangle. And so, and this has already been surveyed, so a lot of foundation has already been laid.
Are they gonna need a survey of the triangle?
No. No, well, actually, there already is one.
Okay, good, because I have.
Well, about the same when they survey the property, they have to survey the whole, the whole, the whole piece.
Uh, they surveyed both pieces.
I'm saying, they have to look at the whole piece when they surveyed it, why would they go ahead and say, oh, let's cut it off here?
Well, well, they were, uh, I, I don't know, but I know that these, that the town, I think quite frankly, paid for the survey. I don't wanna say that to Tom, but I've been, anyway, I have a copy of it, I emailed it to Charlie.
Fifty-two thousand plus.
Both parcels have been surveyed, uh.
Ten percent interest to you.
Okay.
And, and this.
Any further discussion on this, because this has been going in circles.
So.
No, I think we're good, I think.
Yeah, and I will, um, email Charlie, this is my summary of what I'm gonna send to Frank, make sure you agree with it, and then I'll send an email to both of you.
So we need to make a motion to sell both pieces of property?
Well, you're not in a position.
No, no, I think, right, we're not, because we haven't bought that piece from the county.
We can just suggest to go forward and try to put this together.
Which I will.
Yeah.
But to make this for town meeting.
Well, yeah, we got, we're, we're, we need, we're not there yet, we need to buy our, the county share first.
Um, do you have to? Because I'm gonna throw this out without having thought it through, is that if you, I think it would be possible.
You told us that you wanted us to buy.
Right, right, but, but before could mean five minutes before. No, seriously.
No, seriously, the, the other thought I thought about.
But, but for the town to do it, you need a town meeting to come up with money.
That's right.
Whether we could actually say to the county, you give us written permission to sell this, your piece of property, then we share the, share the benefits.
Well, I'm thinking.
You could do a combined purchase and sales agreement, but that gets a little dusty.
Well, no, wait, 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 keep it simple, so that, for example, this all gets worked out ahead of time. It's probably not gonna happen until January, by the time all the details and everything else. And so you could have it worked out where, I'm guessing you acquire by deed from the county or order of taking, we always do everything with order of taking. So you're gonna have your deed ready and your check for seventy-five thousand dollars and do your closing, and I'm sitting right there. And as soon as the deed gets recorded into the town.
You put the money that I bank account.
I'm standing right behind them with an order of taking and a check for a hundred and fifty thousand that I then hand to the town.
Yeah, we tell them not to cash their check until we deposit our check.
And Charlie has a deed for that piece right behind you.
And make sure.
We would, we would do that, that would all be in the same deed.
And make sure the state's check clears first.
Which it will. So, so I think, Charlie, we actually could do these where the town, you know, you acquire from the town, excuse me, you acquire from the inhabitants of Plymouth County, and I'm right behind you.
Yeah, well, that's fine, but I, but I, the point is, I legally, this board can't, or me, or whoever.
We can't make a decision right now.
Well, no, it's not even that, it's like, I mean, I legally, I can't have a, yeah, I can't have a check in hand.
Oh, absolutely.
Without the money.
Absolutely.
The only way to go get that is from town meeting.
Absolutely, yeah, so nothing will happen until after the town meeting and then.
We can do is just say, yeah, let's.
Yeah, we're, we're on.
I'm trying to agree at this point that Joan and Frank and Charlie will discuss the issues and then get back to us with some type of report as to where we are.
Well, the report that I will come back with particularly is what does it take, what will it take to convey this strip to the town? Because nothing is gonna happen until you know that you're gonna get this strip.
A dollar and other valuable consideration.
That's right, and so Pam, how'd you like, what, how are your minutes coming? The whole thing.
And, and just remember, you know, our heads might be shaped like Waddy Pops or Nut Suckers.
Uh, but no, that's, that's fine, and then we don't have the nobody, my, the next generation of me doesn't have to look at this file and say, what is this for, what happened?
Yeah, but we'll miss you, coming down, you can just come down to visit.
Well, we're not, you know, you never know, we're not done with everything yet, there's still a lot of stuff happening.
I got some land down in Florida, some swamp land.
I'm from Florida, though, Troy, so.
It's all gonna be swamp.
There's not much swamp left in Florida, they're draining off.
No, it's coming back.
Yeah, it is.
With climate change.
Yes.
We'll have sea water.
Yeah, but no, just to recap, it's, uh, yeah, you, you want this sliver that was surveyed out, I can get you a copy of the plan. We can, I can have it made at Staples or something like that, and then you can see what it looked like. I have no idea if that sliver, I guess the town had it surveyed, so you know it meets your needs.
I was just gonna say, yeah, the question's gonna be, we just need to verify that it's giving us everything we need.
Yeah, and, and so that's with them tying together the triangle and the other piece, and the Plymouth County gets, uh, presumably they still agree, seventy-five thousand, and we would be paying a total of a hundred and fifty thousand, and we get this sliver.
Sounds like a plan, Sam.
I think so, this is good. Tom, will you be happy afterwards?
No, I'm never gonna be happy.
I know, that history.
We've had too much history for me to be happy, can I, can I deal with it, yeah?
And, and the word is, I might forget, but I don't forget.
That's right, and I don't blame you, I mean, I, I witnessed some of the rudeness, so I, um, I, I completely sympathize with, with the position of the town.
We, we really literally had to fight for every dollar, I mean, it was, it was awful.
Yeah. So it's completely understandable. Gordon, thank you for, for fresh eyes and a fresh perspective, and that was very good.
Well, you have something we need too, so.
Yeah, there you go. And, and this way.
Well, I can justify saying that's worth the fifty-two thousand, in my mind.
So could I.
We're still taking less for the, the land in general, but.
For the ability to be able, if you should choose.
We've struck an accord here, that, that it's beneficial, and at the end of the day, it's two house lots. House lots are not necessarily an advantage to any community.
Yeah, that's right, it's more kids in the school, yeah, and that's more people.
I, I hear that story all the time, you know, more kids in the school, you know, gotta educate them somewhere.
Well, that's true, well, at least they're in school, right?
Are we under twelve per class now?
Yeah, right. I'm also on the school committee and the Civil Lake School Committee, so that's the running.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, so I'm, I will send you, Charlie, a little summary, and then, um, I'll be at the Plymouth County Commissioners' meeting, and then if Troy doesn't do email, but Troy, if you have a date when I need to.
I, I, I still use, you know, the horse and the carrots and things.
The bone, right?
Yeah, you can always contact Charlie.
Okay, all right, and so, um, all right.
Look at me giving up Charlie.
Does anybody, you can keep, no, okay, I'll be bringing you back the next time, but I'll get you that survey plan. And digitally, if, if I think I can take it to Staples and they would turn it into a digital. It's a full size.
Yeah, we go, we, you know, we go down and we print it today, for instance, doing it both ways.
Where'd you go?
We print it today over in Kingston.
Oh, that's the name of the place?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can go there too, yeah, okay, all right.
Is that it?
We're in the street.
I don't know, it's just by the railroad tracks.
Oh, I know the railroad track, everything is.
Yeah, like on the left inside, just so you hit the post office.
Yeah, that's, that's Kingston, it's just, it's, you know, by the railroad, everything that you ever wanted, so, all right.
Have a safe drive home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what part of Florida is the county?
What part?
What part of Florida?
Gainesville, and my father's from Key West.
My, my granddaughter just graduated from Eckerd College down in St. Petersburg.
Okay, no, this Gainesville's in the middle of the Minnesota, where the Gators were not, were not sent.
So, so you went over the long bridge to get there.
Yeah, yeah, with trailering a boat, my, yeah, my mother was white knuckled, she was so afraid that the boat would get a flat tire on the trailer, which is always.
And I love it, Dave, the fact that they tell you, did you gas up when you're in the middle of the bridge?
Oh, really? I haven't been over there in decades, but yeah, early on, it was still old overseas highway, that was a long ride.
It feels like you're going up to the clouds. And most of it is the drop off.
My most fun remembrance of Florida is, well, forty years ago, driving across Alligator Alley.
Tammy Emmy Trail, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was, talk about desolate, it was a trailer with hay on it, on fire. And it was about halfway, so do you turn around, do you go past it, I mean, there was only a two-lane road in those days. It was, uh.
Black?
Blistered the paint on the right-hand side of the car, yeah, it was that bad.
Yeah.
Kids were screaming.
Tell TJ to throw cigarettes, throw cigarettes out of the car.
Well, that's what happened, I'm sure, the guy was smoking, yeah.
Throw a cigarette out.
Oh, gosh, yeah, so anyway, thank you both.
Well, thank you for the information.
You're very welcome, it's always good to come and discuss things and.
Well, they're smart sending you.
Oh, well, thank you, but I'm the only one they have, so.
Well, not necessarily by default, but it was better than having some of the, uh.
Oh, we don't want people from Boston, no.
That was a big part of the problem, the arrogance was just amazing.
Yes, and that person has since retired a long time ago, and another person who was even more arrogant has since returned. So, and Jason Zimmer is not, he's, he's very cooperative.
What's his name, bring him up here?
He's probably been here before.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice young man.
Yeah, yeah, we worked a lot.
I didn't realize he was twenty, high up there, like much.
I'm not high up, but Jason is the.
Yeah, we worked, yeah, we worked a lot with him on getting the access back on access.
Yeah, okay, yeah, he was here for that.
And there was someone when they were doing the, the road. The Burris Pond, when they wanted to take out half the, half the hill.
Yeah, they did take, well, they didn't take that.
No, they didn't take too much.
No, just a little bit.
They took a sliver, they, they could have. Yeah, well, I mean, it, it was a pretty natural spot to go down.
Yeah.
It was unfortunately Mr. Case Marick who was, uh, disturbed by it, but understandable, yeah.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Take care.
Happy recording.
Okay. Pam, do we have anything else before we go into executive session, any live entertainment, road opening? So I'm gonna ask if the board would vote to go into executive session to discuss the continued negotiations on the patrol.
Charlie, you just, you did have one more.
Sorry.
Uh, municipal vulnerability grant.
Oh, I'm not, I didn't have anything, oh. No, I appreciate, I, it's an award announcement, but I'm, I didn't even write it up, so.
And then you had zoning bylaw amendment.
And nothing's happened, so. So go to, go into executive session, discuss patrol officers and highway cemetery contracts, negotiations also, the grievances involving Stephen Waterman for his two-week suspension termination of public documents. Grievances as discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town.
I make that motion.
Second.
Yes.
And we will not be coming back into open session, and there won't be any announcements.